Good evening, this is the time and place for the Grand Forks Jobs Development Authority. I'll begin with a roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock. Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Have a form.
We have one item on the agenda this evening. We'll open a public hearing on the Grand Forks Herald Building purchase. Mr. Feeland.
Mr. Weber, before you open the public hearing, I'll give you an overview that I provided at the Growth Fund Committee. And I think I had just a few slides over that I did at the Growth Fund also. Thanks for being, for allowing us to be here, Chair Weber, in particular, I should thank Mayor Brown, who lets us work on some terrific projects of which we have in front of you today. Somebody asked me, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a hard time, he said, "You had a hard time filling pot holes, so what do you think, how do you think you can do this project here?" And so it made me ponder for a little bit, but then I thought of all the great things that we've been able to do over the last couple of years, you know, with the infrastructure sales tax, that's 73 percent. Our wastewater interconnect with these Grand Forks, the Grand Forks Water Treatment Plant, as well as all the great downtown projects that we have going on, not to mention JR Simplot and River by Refiner. So that's just in the last couple of years, so it made me ponder a while, but I think we've done some extraordinary things, and I'd like to present this on behalf of the city staff. If I could have the PowerPoint slides, let's just kind of give some sense of the Grand I should also mention Paul Robinson's here from Forum Communications, and also Kevin Ritterman, who's the broker for the building. Maybe we can just, we'll just move on. What I was going to show you is that, you know, really, when we started looking at City Hall several years ago, we looked at corridors, and one of the corridors is on Forest Street here, which is this government central district here, with looking at Grand Forks Central, Grand Forks City Hall, and the Herald Building. And how do we move forward in that space? And, you know, it's interesting, five years later, that the Grand Forks Herald Building and its industry in itself is kind of where it's at, in particular. So it really shows how important this is as part of the greater downtown conversation that we have at this point in time. Further, and these are attachments, there are going to be some attachments up here, but if you look at the Grand Forks Herald Building itself, you know, we focused a lot on the first floor, which is the primary tenancy that, you know, the City of Grand Forks and the JDA are going to be moving forward with. And we had a collective of three important key points of that. Number one was the community collaboration space, which is the largest piece of the first floor, and that would be partnerships with the JDA, this board, University of North Dakota, and the Grand Forks Public Library. That was the big piece on this, is how could we make that community space really extraordinary? And so when I first started talking to Mr. Robinson about a year ago, that was really our first thought on moving forward. The second piece, and Keith Funt is here today, is they were moving forward with looking at space for a conference room, a boardroom, if you will, and how could we partner as part of this building, as part of creating that space also. So that's the second piece of this building with a partner in the EDC. Along the way, and we've talked with the University of North Dakota, their ideas of online education, having a downtown education presence has come up, so I think it's not only a board conference room between the city, JDA, and EDC, and the larger community, but it's also an opportunity for an online classroom, and that was one of UND's things. So beyond UND's thoughts on the community collaboration space, kind of a downtown student union, a downtown library presence, also this online classroom. Really, the final piece was city staff. And in your report, we're really cramped for space here. The last time we added on to this building was circa 1992, so about 27 years ago. And so really, the last piece was how could we, how could we expand somewhere else? It's really going to be hard to expand on this existing footprint, that building is so near to us. How could we find some use that would be really a collaborative presence? We know we have the Grand Forks Economic EDC, that's there. You pay as part of economic development about a third of the Grand Forks EDC, so it's a really nice compliment that we're already investing in the EDC and their space over there. And then when you look at offices such as the MPO, planning, community development that are natural, that, those are some of the ideas initial that we had, and that would allow them to move over, and then on the second floor would allow us to have more space for engineering and inspection that would follow into that space. Along the way, I've gotten other ideas. We've talked about, should we look at IT going over there, and then we'd make a similar shuffle around with space at this point in time. We've talked about HR, we've talked about public info, but really, the planning, community development, MPO, has been the leading edge of what would work the best as we move forward with those things. So really, that's the first floor, and that's been our focus of how do we add energy in the downtown? How do we add space for City Hall? And how do we combine with our partners in the EDC? And when we were at, in Besmark this winter with Governor Bergen and briefing him, Peter Johnson talked about the partnership that he was building with the City of Grand Forks, and mentioned this particular building project. And Governor Bergen said, "Just don't take it from me, but a downtown university presence is just makes sense, the facts should say you should do it, and you should move forward." So that was his comment on that particular point. So, if we can get this going, Mr. Brooks. As part of this, as part of the purchase agreement, we are also going to assume some lease agreements. One is with the Grand Forks EDC that I notated in my staff report. The second one would be the new one with Forum Communications, that's in your staff report. And the third one would be the Grand Forks Public Schools, they have a two-year agreement with that. So we think with the Grand Forks EDC, they're looking forward to our partnership long-term in that building, and in particular, extending that partnership with this new boardroom and partnering with us on that. With the Forum Communications, you have a five-year agreement with some extensions on that as we move forward. And finally, with the Grand Forks School District, I have reached out to the Grand Forks School District, and they have a two-year agreement. They said they would like to stay in that building, but with their current rent and what they have would be more of a challenge for them to stay in the building, so if they could work with you on that. Currently, the EDC's all-in lease rate is $12 per square foot. We're proposing as part of this, $14 all-in per square foot basis for Grand Forks Herald, and I think the Grand Forks School District would like to be in and around that point, too. We would certainly ask for the Grand Forks EDC if we could increase their per-square-foot rate to $14 to equalize across that over the next couple of years as we move forward. Some bullet points as part of the agreement itself. The appraisal that was conducted by a well-known appraiser, one that we respect their work, appraised the building at 3.2 to 3.4. Our assessing department has its true and full value in around $2.9 million. When we started looking, when I started talking with Mr. Robinson about a year or so ago, we were looking at a number about 2.7 to 2.8, and one of my arguments with Mr. Robinson is that a large portion of this space, being the community collaboration space, was going to be a bonus, a gift to the community in a form of a, you know, public space that people could use. And so trying to take some of that square footage and reduce that down, that's how you kind of get to the 2.7 to 2.8 million dollars. In the agreement right now that the Growth Fund is approved, it's 2.75 million with 80, up to $80,000 worth of fit-up costs. I have discussed with both Mr. Ritterman and Mr. Robinson, representing Forum Communications. We have not received anything from them, per se. They think it's in and around that $80,000 for those fit-up costs, and that's why we have the up-to number, because I don't have anything in front of me to respond to. Mr. Brooks helped me with some, looking at the downtown rents, to include the rents that we have in the Corporate Center, both 1 and 2. And if you look at those market rents, both the rents with CAM and all those additions, what we find is around $14 to $15 is the downtown per-square rent average. And if you look at our Corporate Center, too, we're probably between that $13 to $14 per We did, we did as part of it, work with some private developers in looking at whether we should lease this building. And when we first were looking at purchasing the building, developers came to say that they were going to look to buy the building. And so we took a step back. Later, they came back to say, under a similar concept to what we originally were thinking of, of us becoming a leaseholder. And so we did work hard on those things in a similar fashion, as though we were going to own the building. And so we worked on parallel tracks about looking at the lease purchase option. And what we look at from a long-term perspective, if we're going to own this building for some time, it makes some sense that we retain ownership of it, responsibility as we move The other thing we've talked a lot with Growth Fund and the JDA, and Economic Development in particular, is that what are we going to do for our strategy? Really, really at a really terrific apex point if we can make some of the right moves. We have a lot of portfolio buildings that are in the JDA's portfolio. If you look at Corporate Center 1 and 2, if you look at Cirrus, you look at Center Inc., those are all buildings that we're looking at divesting ourselves in some form or fashion here in the next few years. So I think all told, we will likely divest ourselves of more than 250,000 square feet of space, and we will, we will be, we'll receive some revenue for that, probably greater than $10 million in revenue over that same period of time. And so how do we look at strategic assets? And that's where we came to the Grand Forks Herald Building, that really is a strategic and long-term asset. Assets that have service wealth for the community, wealth in this downtown area as we move forward. Some lemonade out of this particular thing, and really some added values to it. So I think the argument is, I've heard is, certainly the Grand Forks Herald. I think finally, this provides us an opportunity to work with our collaborative partners that Mayor has insisted. And I'll start with, I said, Grand Forks EDC, University of North Dakota, Grand Forks Public Library, Grand Forks Public Schools. It provides a unique opportunity in history that we can do this, all told, with all the other downtown projects that we have on. And so we're going to focus a lot of our energy, I suspect, on tonight. And I should also mention, you know, Grand Forks City Hall has to play a complimentary role to what we do with the Grand Forks Herald Building. And so if we do purchase this building, there's more master planning to do with all the inside stakeholders, include some of the outside stakeholders and what they want to do. And so UND and the Public Library and EDC have all agreed to be our partners. However, they want a lot more input on what they like to see in that building. So there's more due diligence work to do with them as partners, if we do own this building. And there's more due diligence to do at City Hall, and how do we, these two buildings complement each other over the next 50 years? So there's more work to be done as we move forward as part of this exciting opportunity. And we're probably going to spend more time on this project, but later in the city council agenda, just think of what we have. We have a Demers Avenue reconstruction, we have a University Avenue reconstruction from the Cooley to 42nd Street. Those are two historic projects that we're going to approve tonight as we move forward. And we got to this point over the last few years of working with those partners. One, the North Dakota DOT, the other one, the University of North Dakota. And look at what we're going to have at the end of this construction season, $20 million more in reinvestment as part of this. I think the Grand Forks Herald Building fits that reinvestment strategy in the downtown area with all of our collaborative partners. So with that, Mr. Weber, that's all that I have, so if you have any questions, I think it's probably time to open the public hearing.
Very good. And so we will now open the public hearing, and I do have some speaker cards here. Begin with Mr. Nagel. See, I don't see him in the room. I have a speaker card for Mr. Nagel. Anyone know? TJ, in the neighborhood? Next, I've got--
Is this Ms. Nagel? Ms. Nagel?
No, this was TJ.
Okay.
Is Ms. Nagel here? No. Any Nagels? Next card, Mr. Koontz, Mike. If you'd step forward and give us your name and address. Thank you, Mike.
My name's Mike Koontz. I reside at 275 Elk Drive in Grand Forks.
All right, please go ahead.
Sure. Thank you for having me. Courtesy of Delta, I was able to stick around another hour here today. My 5:30 flight's at 7:00, so my wife's here actually as well. Her name's Tanya Koontz, and she resides at 275 as well.
It was very late, the flight was delayed.
Yeah. So you're going to get the B team, for starters here. I would like to put something up on the screen if somebody can help me with--
Of course.
I don't know if it will work, if I go in here?
I doubt it.
All right. Hold your hand.
Yeah, there's one. I think you can control the mic.
Where's the--
It's just TJ.
All right.
So I would also like to commend all of you, a lot of your friends and colleagues, and certainly you've been doing a great job with a lot of the things that Todd mentioned at the city level. And I know I only have three minutes, so I won't--
No, no.
--be able to--
Please.
I won't be able to rebut a lot of the things that were said, so--
The three minutes is something we usually reserve for citizen comments after council meetings for a public hearing.
Just real--
We're interested in what is--
Okay, thank you. Real quick, I wanted to share our concept, and I represent tonight Communication Central Building LLC. It's a LLC that we started to purchase, the Grand Forks Herald Building. We entered into a purchase agreement back on May 24th of this year. We put together this concept on what that building, the reuse of that building could be used. Craig Tweeden and I, we go both back to '97, where I was part of the design team that redesigned the Grand Forks Herald Building, and Craig was the contractor that rebuilt it. So a lot of heartfelt, you know, special things about this building, and that's why we engaged and came up with this plan. Certainly worked closely with your staff and really enjoyed that process, and just a little bit of meaning here. I'm going to back up, I glossed over this, but this is the reused space for the community space. We're showing a e-library space that would go in there, and also some new technology, new lighting, new colors, new life to that space. And as this fades in, then it also is flexible, it slides apart, and this is the podium setup for large meetings that we've all been in there for currently. As it transitions, it'll go to a high-tech conference room here. This is something that we knew through meetings with EDC that they wanted and needed was a larger space for high-tech, you know, state-of-the-art type meetings that allow large groups to come into the space and rent. Here, we're just showcasing some of the technology that we do and would have planned to put into the building. Having said all that, I feel like there was a fair amount of time and interaction that our group had with city staff that was kind of glossed over in that overview. I personally have been in hundreds of meetings on this project to keep the people, the key stakeholders together, keep the concept together, and really drive hard for a successful project. As many of you know, I'm a little, you know, disenchanted that the way that it came together at the end here with, you know, a private solution that we had, and then felt like we were kind of maneuvered around with the public sector coming in after, Todd says we were working in parallel. Never heard that before. I thought we were working in concert with for the last 12 months, not in parallel. And earlier, you know, today, and the last few days, I've provided you guys with lots of details and things. Hopefully, it's been shared amongst the group. I think I'd encourage you to not move too hastily on this decision. We've been going through this together for the last 12 months, and I'm really not sure why it needs to converge tonight. And I'm not just using that as a stall technique. I just was made aware and provided some information and seen some comments and things that I just needed to clear up today. And so that was my first opportunity to do that with today with you guys, so. Lots of details, there's lots of, you know, things we could talk about, but I just thank you for your time and just hearing this out.
Okay. Very good. Yes?
I guess, Mr. Koontz, I've got two questions for you. Are you here on behalf of Icon?
No.
Are you up here on behalf on the LLC? Because there's been two Herald articles now that has mentioned you as the co-owner of Icon. So I'm just trying to figure out--
Yeah, I think that's how they, that's how they like to refer to me as. I'm here, we established an LLC to redevelop this real estate project. That's what I'm representing.
And then when you talk about, in the Herald, it talks about you recouping some money for some, some time or effort that you put into the project, what do you mean by recouping that money?
So in my, all I have to sell is my ideas and my thoughts, that's what I do. So as you can see, our creativity and our ability to assemble good, solid strategies and ideas for redevelopment of that building, and a lot of it is blended in your JDA analysis that you had done. And, you know, there's a lot of intellectual property, there's a lot of design work, there's a lot of, I've personally paid for the legal work to negotiate the leases with the Grand Forks Public Schools. I paid the legal work to do a lot of the things to get organized and get that project to where it is today. I've gone down and met with the Herald, and when we had a purchase agreement before, they were going to lease for a year, now they're up to five years. I think our Collaboration Center concept and all the entities coming together has got a long ways to say, "Grand Forks Herald, you're important in this town, and you need to stay with us and be part of it." And certainly, in concert with your staff and with Todd and his efforts, not taking anything away from him, but I also want to be real about how it went and those things. So long-winded answer to your question, I guess.
Anything else? Ms. Marshall, please.
Mr. Koontz, and I know we discussed this in the meeting this afternoon, but for the application of others who are here, you know, I, having sat on the library board, I certainly appreciate all the meetings that you were at and the time that you put into conceptualizing what that piece could look like. I did want to ask you, though, again, about, you have an option to purchase the building with the form, and then you let that lapse or deliberately, and I'm not sure which one it was, you got off it last fall. Can you tell us about that?
Sure. So on May 24th, we signed a purchase agreement that gave us time to assemble all these pieces, bring the vision together, bring all the stakeholders together, and it expired in August. The city, we had, we were on a timeline to bring forward to you guys with, you know, some action on how the space might work for you, was it valid, did it make sense? And in August, you guys asked for more time, the city did. So then we extended it to October 5th. October 5th came around, and we said, "Well, geez, these forum guys are never going to believe that we need another extension." So we went down and presented to them, showed them the concept that you saw and a lot of other things, and said, "We need, you know, say it needs more time, we need to extend that." They said, "Great, love the concept, we're liking so much, we want to be partners with you, we want to join you and Craig, and, you know, let's keep going, let's get this thing figured out, and what a great, great thing. We're going to, we'll commit to five years if the city commits to the first floor, you know, embracing their part of it." And so that's the way we kept working, we kept hard at it. That agreement contemplates us being on or around January 31st. So we, you know, that's what we were pushing for as a decision from this group, and then on about the second week of February, I read in the Herald that you guys were going to buy the building, and was surprised to see that. So the agreement extends, extends, asked for more time, extends, and, you know, dies on the vine without action from the city.
So October 5th was the last date that you had--
Hard date.
--in terms of the agreement with the form? Is that correct?
Written date, yes. Oral dates continue.
And did you get your investment back, your deposit?
We put down this money, and that's been returned, yes.
Next speaker, Ms. Koontz, did you want to, did you?
Sure. Very good. No, I just wanted to thank you for the collaborative effort. I think we're, I just want to reiterate, you know, we're all on the same team, trying to make Grand Forks a better place to work with and play. I think the part that I'm trying to reconcile is, you know, I'm doing some research on this, is when you have a private entity that wants to help develop and make our city a vibrant one, and you have a public entity, you know, what's the mix? What's the finesse there of a real solution? And, you know, the more that I read about this, you know, I covered the Fairness Act of 1992, where it states, "If there's a viable commercial entity willing to take something on, the government should not be able to come and take that and take over that." Not that that's exactly this case, but just asking you to understand that from the private sector kind of feels like that's what happened. You know, we've got some great synergies and great relationships with people in this town, and obviously, you guys all have great ideas, too. I feel like we worked really hard to capture some of those contacts, to bring them into a building that they maybe wouldn't have considered before. We're talking about the approval of the wall being expensed out, and everyone seems to agree on that. But I just want to say that, how did that wall get there? There's design services that were in place to determine where that wall went. There was work that recruited the people to be in the building that required that wall to be designed to be built. So I feel like if you approve a wall being paid for, you should also approve the backsteps that took to get that wall into place. I think we're all reasonable people, I think, I love the proactive synergy of the city looking to improve things, but I think there comes a convergent point of what is the right thing to do with the city moving forward on something when there is private enterprise that is willing to do that, too. The duplicity that's hard for me to understand is, this money is coming from the Growth Fund, which to me, growth is about trying to energize business to take place. And I feel like the Growth Fund has really, I don't have access to 0% money, so if I do this project, that's a very different scenario on how that has to cash flow to me. So I feel like when you can vote on public taxpayer money to fund your project as a city, that's really an unfair advantage to a private citizen. I'm competing against my own taxpayer money, if you can understand that point of view. So it just feels like it's hard to compete, and it feels like this is kind of, you've made a decision, the intellectual property, the ideas that we have, I understand it's, it may not be fair, that's just the way it is, and we can respect that. I think we're just looking to capture some of the investment that we have outside of a physical wall. And certainly, we look forward-- And certainly, we looked forward, you know, we, the table's been beaten about develop downtown, develop downtown, so we saw this building, we've been looking for a way to get downtown as a family for a long time, looked forward to owning this building, being a part of that, and it just seems like that's no longer the case. Our investment in that would have been recaptured, would we be allowed to own that? We highlighted some flaws that we saw in some of the JDA analysis today, and highlighted some of the discrepancies in what you were thinking we were asking for rent and what that was. Those details can be discussed among you. So, anyway, just wanted to say we totally agree that this project should happen. Who owns it, I guess, is how you look at, you know, the lens that you look through for development. I think it would be better in private hands, you can use the space as you need it, and you're not subjected to be a landlord, you're looking to divest properties. So, in my opinion, which is just that, why would you own a building when you can lease just what you need at very, very, very close to the same cost, which we talked about those today? So, long-winded, thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you both for your work. Yes, Mr. Sandy, please.
I don't know, Mike or Tanya, just a relatively simple question. If you had a purchase agreement in place and had money down, and nobody was standing in your way, why didn't you buy the building?
You know, on the public, on the private side, you've got to balance risk with decisions you make, right? So our strategy was to assemble the tenants, which the city would be one of them, and manage the risk that way. So...
So if we tonight decide we're not going to buy the building, are you going to buy it tomorrow, or?
I'm gonna enter into a new purchase agreement and go back down that path, yes.
So, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding what has changed between October and today?
A lot. I have a list of a variety of things that we've done in meetings and in planning and in certification, that Grand Forks Public Schools has signed a lease, the Herald has been presented and agreed to a lease, a lot of things have changed since October.
So, one last question. You were quoted in the paper, I don't even remember when that was, but specifically saying that if the city of Grand Forks didn't join and lease space, it would be disastrous for your project. Is that still the case today? If we don't, if you buy the building tomorrow and we don't go in, are you moving forward or are you not moving forward?
If I buy the building?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that building creates a really interesting challenge because of the big community room. There's only so many tenants, there's only so many things that can happen in that room that makes sense. The library is one of them, it's a natural fit, it's a hub to the downtown community, I think it's the right solution. If you get, if the library decides not to do that, that's not, and they might do that, and then that project is at jeopardy. We've held short, we have private tenants, law firms, things like that, that are interested in going in that building. We've helped strong to our Collaboration Center, where we have the University of the City, the right people in that building instead of a onesie twosie kind of thing in there. So, but that, you know, that's the path, we'd have to go back if you choose not to be part of it, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Weber? Mr. Weigl, please.
I would just ask one more question of either of you. We talked, or is it Tanya?
Tanya.
Okay. You talked a little bit about, basically, essentially, the government having an advantage over the private sector.
Yes.
Where we, zero interest, go in, we could buy the building. I think one thing that you failed to mention with that, though, is, based on the numbers that I've seen for an estimate, we would be paying significantly more money to a private sector, to a private business, than we would just buying the building. So while I understand where you're coming from, I also have to look back at the taxpayers that I represent and say, is this a financially, is this a good financial decision renting this space? Because from what I've seen, I think we could have the building paid off within 10 years based off the rent we would be paying you.
I understand.
So that's something that I think we need to weigh in the long term. If this was a one to two-year project, I'd be all, I'd be all in and say, hey, let's lease this project from you. But from the way I understand it, the way I look at it, it's more of a long-term project. And I think based off the citizens that I represent, I think they'd be more comfortable with a better financial plan for the city purchasing the building versus...
Thank you for the comment. I feel like we addressed those earlier today in showing how the information that you've been given was incorrect. I'll let Mike talk to the specifics of that, but we feel that the information you're basing the decision on, which is the reason we're asking you to table this, is because the very information you're basing your decision on to buy this building is flawed. I can kind of attest to that more specifically.
That's our request, Councilman Weigl. They, we want you to hit the pause button, we want you to understand what you're signing up for. They, you, the city is going to lease space for $130,000 a year in that building? That's your base rent? Times 10 years, that's 1.3 million. You don't pay for half that building in 10 years, but your analysis shows otherwise. But that's, that's just the set of rules that you looked at with the analysis, but it's not accurate.
So, do you have an analysis that you can send forward?
Absolutely.
Obviously, that's much drastic, more drastic.
Yeah, so, I think, you know, we talked about the 130,000. So there's CAM, CAM charges, utility charges, fit-up things, you're going to pay those whether you own the building or whether you rent the building. You're going to pay for the lights, you're going to pay for the insurance, you're going to pay, or most people pay property tax, things like that in the CAM charge. If you set those aside, because you're going to pay those anyway, and then it's, what are you paying for rent? And you're paying $130,000 for rent. Times 10 years is 1.3 million. I'm not here to sabotage your deal, I'm here to be a good partner. I think we can still come together and create a win-win, and, you know, maybe in the end you own it, maybe in the end we own it. I think at least we came together and we talked about it and we figured it out.
Thank you, Mr. Coontz. Part of the city's due diligence on this was to reach out to a third party, a local banker, Mr. Ramsey's in the audience. Mr. Ramsey, would you mind stepping forward? You provided us some projections, some cost estimates, et cetera, and took a look at those as well this afternoon based upon some new numbers. If you could respond to that.
Right, thank you Brett. John Ramsey is my name, I'm a partner in Assurity Finance and Development, and I was asked by the city to take a look at the difference between leasing and buying this property. And I believe it was back at the end of January, first part of February, when I first brought some analysis to the city. And based on the assumptions that I was given, the best-case scenario was about a $4 million swing to the city's favor between, as Mike mentioned earlier, the 1.3 million dollars, leasing it, the net present value of the lease over that time would be an outlay of 1.3 million dollars. Now, the information, I understand some of the rent information was wrong, that was corrected in the document that I saw today that Mike put together. And then also, the CAM charges that we had in there originally were brought down, and I think, and I'm not sure because I haven't had time to talk about this, but basically, I think it's because the city isn't going to pay taxes on it. So with that, again, my best-case scenario when I first did this was about $4 million swing. The information that I was given this afternoon with the corrected information, that best-case scenario is about $3 million. So the city is looking at an outlay of 1.3 million dollars if you rent it over the next 10 years, your net present value at 3.5%. Or bringing in the other revenue from the rental property, it should be a plus, and again, these are just assumptions, but based on those assumptions, it's about a plus 1.7 million dollars. So there's the $3 million swing, and that basically assumes that the Herald is renting and the city, or the Grand Forks School District is renting. Now, in the assumptions that were updated this afternoon, there was also one ran where only half of that space was rented. So only half of the space going to the Herald and to the School District was rented, and in that case, the city was still better off to the tune of about 1.5 million dollars.
And in fact, the numbers you're discussing were assuming a purchase price of 3.2 million.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I forgot to mention that, but when I was given this task, the city had not yet struck a deal with the Herald. I was told that they were going to try and get it for 2.7 in that range, but to be fair, I took the appraised value of 3.210. So again, you take that, there's $460,000 here, so you could add that to the plus side, as far as at least from the city's perspective.
Right. And those numbers were already assuming approximately 3/4 of a million for fix-up, and with this deal that we've been able to strike, that would give us another, almost double that amount.
Well, 460,000, you're correct, Mr. Weber, the fit-up that we put in this analysis was $750,000, so.
Okay. And part of what you said in our conversation this afternoon, and it's already been discussed by Mr. Phelan, but we're getting a pretty good deal here.
And again, it's just, you know, basically taking the numbers and putting them into, again, what's, you know, over the course of the next 10 years, what's it going to cost the city versus what would the city earn on this deal? So yes, it's, there's a benefit to the city, a big benefit.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. In an ideal world, communications and the Grand Forks Herald would still have, Mr. Coons, I'm sorry?
If I could, just to Jones, and we could do this all night, and 3 million down to 1. something is, and then if there's a, if he inputs the lease that you're about to approve tonight with the Grand Forks Herald, that number will drop to 400,000 at present value. So what happens is we're going from 3 million down to 400,000, which starts to look a lot different when you look at what you could do with your JDA funds and other aspects of job growth and things like that. So, and that, again, it's hard to do this in real time. I was just reading the Post this weekend, so I was working from the lease information that just came out Friday, so I haven't had time to present this previously or even talk to Joan about it.
But we've actually met a couple times. We met, I think about nine days ago, a first meeting, and we met again this afternoon. Yes?
Correct.
Very good. In an ideal world, or at least in my ideal world, Forum Communications and the Grand Forks Herald would still have hundreds of employees working in the iconic Herald Building. Similarly, it'd be nice if the city had $10 million to renovate City Hall to meet the needs of a growing city. Instead, Forum Communications is in a situation where they're seeking to sell the Grand Forks Building, and they're planning on staying on as renters, but with a staff much, much smaller than the newspaper employed a couple decades ago. And with a growing city and the reality that many city staff have moved out of other buildings over the last several years, the city finds itself in need of additional office and working space. While communication, Forum Communications selling their building is maybe an unfortunate thing in some ways, it also provides a silver lining in that city government can access parking and office space essentially right across the street. This is a unique and favorable opportunity for the city. Additionally, rather than running the risk of the building sitting vacant and upsetting all of the forward momentum going on downtown, the city has been able to work with the public library, the public school district, and UND to move toward what promises to be the exciting sort of public community space that's appropriate for the building that stands as a monument to the city's past and future. Consistent with all of that, last summer, Council President Sandy suggested that the city should simply be its own landlord, and the city should buy the building. I met, as I've mentioned, with Mr. Coons a couple times in the last couple of weeks, and met Ms. Coons for the first time this afternoon. These are people who are doing good business and good community service in our, in Grand Forks. They are pillars of the community, and we're lucky to have people like them helping to move our city forward. Inevitably, there will be differences of opinion, but in the end, this is a growing city with the warmth of a small town. We might disagree, but ultimately, we all want what's best for the city. In this instance, honest differences of opinion, despite honest differences of opinion, the city council and the JDA have looked at the Herald Building now for well over a year, carefully weighing different needs and cost projections. It's become clear that purchasing the Herald Building and developing it as a community space makes good business and good government sense for many reasons. I've heard criticism that the city should not own private property, but as the primary future tenant, it makes sense for us to be our own landlord. It would not make sense, for instance, for the city to sell City Hall to the private sector. The result would be the taxpayers having to pay both for a public building and for private profit. Similarly, it makes sense for the city to serve as a landlord to the library, public school, and collaborative efforts with UND. Additionally, housing the city's planning department in the same building as the Economic Development Corporation sends the message that this is a business-friendly city, boldly looking toward and embracing an exciting and prosperous future. It's not financially prudent for the city to lease its operating space. We own City Hall, we own the Public Works Building and the library, it makes sense for us to own this space. Not only do we need this space, but it is strategically important as a building. It would be irresponsible for us to ignore this building. Imagine if the building were sitting vacant for two or three years from now, I can hear people complaining, why didn't the city do something about that? The city is actually selling property downtown. We are currently selling the Corporate Center. In the next few years, we'll be selling Corporate One and Corporate Two Buildings along with the old water treatment facility. We are selling far more property than we are buying. The city is not interested in competing with the private sector. Instead, it's looking after the interests of the taxpayers and carefully making strategic investments downtown. The city did this in the years after the flood, when it purchased the center building and built Corporate One and Two. The potential purchase of the Herald Building is a similar strategic investment in the future of the city. We're doing so now to add action to our rhetoric of growth. We must not waver in the face of such logical opportunity. And I've been asked, what's the rush? Let's be clear, this is not being rushed. We've been talking about this for over a year, we have cautiously and thoughtfully been looking at this over that time. City staff have presented us with ways to consider the future of the Herald Building and ways to address our growing needs for space, and at each step, we've been supportive of moving forward. The city is fortunate to have creative visionaries and developers, including Mike Coontz and Icon Architects, Dakota Commercial, JLG, JK Homes, Edgewood Development, community contractors, among others. It's our responsibility to create and nurture an environment where their energies and innovative efforts can thrive. This project is consistent with that larger effort and responsibility. So after a year of hard work and due diligence, including recommendations from the mixed membership of the Growth Fund Committee, we are now facing the decision of whether to move decisively forward or to possibly frustrate and even inhibit all of the current positive momentum taking place in our city through analysis paralysis. With that, I'd invite further comments from the JDA. Mr. Mayor?
In light of all, I've heard that ownership is a benefit to the city. I would move to concur with the purchase price of the 2.75 million dollars plus 80,000 fit-up costs for the Grand Forks Herald Building.
We're still in public hearing.
Okay.
So yes, sir.
So my apologies. Mr. Mahula?
Yes.
I thought this was for the Lions Development. Perhaps I'm reading the, please, come forward, sir. Okay?
Thank you, Professor Weber. As Mr. Sandy says, it's a great day to be at downtown Grand Forks. CT Mahula, 617 Plain Hills Drive, Grand Forks, North Dakota. And I, just, my notes and comments are going to be significantly different, I think, than what others have said. One thing that does trouble me because of transparency, I just tonight, for the first time, heard significant reference to data and discussions that took place this afternoon, and in the public hearing, every piece of paper of that data should have been presented to us before. But that's neither there. Now, I'm going to approach it different from a philosophical and ethical point of view. Should any city, any city, rent to an organization that is its supposed watchdog? You know, is the Herald publisher going to become our Baghdad Bob? Once a week at noon, is he going to go out there and say, everything is great, we're better than fun? Renting to the law firms or someone else, I mean, I can get there.
That sounds good, actually. That sounds awesome.
Branch. The library board is less than enthusiastic. I've been to almost all the library boarding meetings the last 12 months. And there, I don't want to speak for them. My perception of how they feel is they're basically being forced to spend 50 to 100,000 dollars on the downtown branch to take it out of their absolutely fantastic programs they have going on now. I mean, that is under a stepping forward rapidly in what they were told that they would not get the extra money. Now, if you want to give them an extra half bill, then it makes sense. If you're going to take it away from their great programs, in my view, it makes no sense. And also, I just want to mention, as Ms. Marshall knows, it has been nine months since the library working group has met. And Mr. Weber, as you have said more than once, everyone on this council is capable of doing more than one or two things at the same time. So I would encourage you to get back on that library working group so we can move forward. The month, $80,700. Your staff report indicates its value at 754,000, or 937 percent over the assessed value. Also, it's 10 times, actually more than 10 times per square foot more than what you sold Arbor Park Lot for. This can be viewed as great news for some of us, but I don't think it will be viewed as great news for Edgewood and the Law Office parking firm. Because if you're going to value their parking lots, which are newer and better, their taxes are going to go up 10 times based on your staff analysis. I don't think the assessor will be looking forward to explaining that. And finally, from my reading of the study of this, oh, one. Nearly $8 what is being billed to our great public school district. There's issues here from what's in those numbers. And finally, this, if preceded by the city and the GDA, effectively kills a potential 4 to 6 million dollar private investment in downtown that would increase both parking and the tax base. And I read from the January 5th Herald, if everything goes according to plan, other developments will spring up nearby. For example, across the street, where it was currently the Herald parking lot, would be a two-story parking garage with either commercial space or apartments above it. So we're losing tax, potential tax revenue from the park, parking lot of the Herald Building. We're losing tax revenue from that huge potential, I mean, there's nothing up there yet, the potential development the developers have talked about. And furthermore, as you move this forward is, as everyone in this town knows, it's highly likely we will have a different person as president of UND within several months. And I would not tie into any commitments they have made unless it's been signed on the paper. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Professor Weber, Mr. Sandy, and the rest of the council. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Mahula? Thank you, Mr. Mahula. And now to close the, the public hearing? Just any, any other speakers for the public hearing? Okay, then, closing the public hearing, Mr. Phelan.
Just want to let you know that what the motion is in front of you. The original staff recommendation was to approve the purchase and lease agreements for the Grand Forks Herald Building with Forum Communications and the associated budget amendments. Budget amendment from Jobs Development Authority, Fund 5996, subject to final review and approval of City Attorney's Office and City Finance Department. And to fill in some blanks, the Growth Fund did place into the purchase agreement a $2.75 million plus up to $80,000 in fit-up costs. That's what's in front of you this evening.
That's my motion.
And okay, so we have a, a motion on the floor. We have a second.
Sure.
Very good.
I have a comment.
Very good. So it was a second and a commenter, very good. So with the second, now we'll take comments. Mr. Sandy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. I really appreciate all the very good dialogue. It's amazing how many people have different opinions and seemingly facts of what's been going on and how we've gotten to here today. There are a few things that I know as fact, because I've been present at several meetings. First meeting that I had related to this project was June 1st, 2018, at 7:00 AM. My wife was kind enough to take the kids to school so I could get to a 7:00 AM meeting where we discussed, originally discussed this concept. Myself, Mr. Phelan, Mr. Coons, Mr. Tweetin were there. I really liked the concept of what they were talking about, trying to move new development of the Herald Building forward. But at the time, I told them, it seemed highly unlikely that we could put together the concept that they were talking about at a rate that the city would be willing to pay. I had a second meeting on July 31st, 2018, also this time at 7:30 in the morning. Again, thank you to my wife for driving the kids to school. At that meeting, we talked more about how we were, the developers were trying to find other people to, to fill space. Things were moving forward. Again, I said, it all sounds great. I have no idea how you're going to be able to put together this sort of deal at a price that the city, that the city would be willing to pay. Fast forward to January 16th, 2019, had a noon meeting. Mr. Veen was there, Mr. Phelan was there, Mr. Coats, Mr. Tweetin. At that day, we were presented with, and it just so happens, Mr. Mahula, I have this piece of paper, and I'm happy to share it with anybody that's interested. We were presented with square footages and base rates for square footages for a lease, for common area maintenance, for fit-out, and for furniture fixtures and equipment. Total, when you get to the bottom line, for the 18,359 square feet, which is approximately 53 percent of the building, was $22.60. Now, I recognize that that is a mixture of funding sources. It includes for that 18,359 square feet. It includes economic development, it includes planning, it includes some knowledge space that City's Area Transit is using. It includes the MBO offices, and it includes a Community Collaboration Center, which is a combination of perhaps the University of North Dakota, but definitely the library. If you take out, so when you boil it down, Mr. Mahula, wherever you are, total cost at $22.60, 18,359 square feet, $414,825, which they were nice enough to subtract, parking fees and property taxes, because we don't need to pay ourselves either of those. So the people that say we're losing out on property taxes are certainly mistaken, because why would we all pay, why would all the taxing entities who pay, who collect property taxes also pay themselves property taxes? Nonetheless, you take out the property taxes, it adjusts to $381,421, which is a number that I've been kind of using as a basis, but I rounded it down to 350,000, as a number that I've been using as a basis for, okay, the city's going to be in, the city and taxing entities, government money, money that's paid by the taxpayers into a pool, whether it's the city's coffers or the library's coffers or into economic development. It's all taxpayer money. It all goes to that 18,359 square feet. If you take out CAM, if you take out fit-up, it still is $250,000 a year. So whether it's $350,000 a year or $250,000 a year, that's still only 53 percent of the building. But if you go on the higher end and say it's $350,000 a year in 10 years, which is what we were asked to provide as a 10-year lease, we're in for $3.5 million. Even if you go on the low end at $250,000 a year, we're in at $2.5 million, which isn't much less than what we've been asked to pay for the building at $2.75 million. And so one could say, we're getting in the way of the private sector. But what most people don't know is, at the same time I had this meeting where we talked about 250,000 or 381,000, the city was informed that we also want you to have the master lease for the building and collect all the rents from all the other people and manage the building and just pay us. And so, if we're doing the work of owning the building, yet we only have 53 percent of the building, but we're paying for 100 percent of the building, what exactly is the point of the city of Grand Forks leasing the space versus buying? Which is why I asked Mr. Veen, and we talked about it, and said, for me, this is all dollars and cents, Mr. Veen. Is that correct? So we suggested, well, let's have a financial analysis done of the net present value for this facility. And so, that's why we asked Mr. Ramsey to look at the numbers. Don't take my word for it, don't take Mr. Veen's word for it. Let's not, let's not let people have innuendo or conjecture. Let's actually get the solid facts on where we are with the value of the building versus what we're being asked to pay. And I think it was pretty simple. You don't need to be a finance major to know that if you're paying essentially the whole thing for the entire building at 53 percent versus paying for the building the same amount of money and owning 100 percent, it only made financial sense, which Mr. Ramsey proved, that it's somewhere between 1.5 million and $4 million over 10 years. It makes logical sense for the city to purchase the building. I've been the one suggesting today and recently that maybe we should wait, Mr. Weber, because I've been saying, what's our theory? But you are correct, it's not going to change the numbers. They are what they are. So I appreciate all of the input that's happened today, but I'm ready to vote.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Any, any further comments, Mr. Veen?
I will respond a little bit to what Mr. Sandy just spoke about. I have not been in favor of the city owning the building, but to lease it for a long time. And I appreciated the work with Mike and Craig and those, and then to get the building to the, to the, or the development to the point that it is. And Mr. Sandy did call me, and we had a discussion about, about moving forward, because I was not really interested in the purchase. But I did say, well, in the, in the public interest, we need to do diligence and at least have the study done. And that's when I think we, about that time, we proceeded to have Mr. Ramsey go ahead and do his study and then bring those results back. And it's probably then that I realized that it was probably not in the best interest of the city to lease space, but to purchase it was against what I thought we should be doing. And it was what, but the numbers spoke for themselves. And I guess I thought to do diligence with the public, what was in the best interest of the public was probably the purchase. And that's how, that swung for me. That wasn't where I thought it was going to be or intended to be. But I, but I, I was in about, I don't know, three or four meetings. I did a lot of tours through the building too over the time. And there was a lot of great work that was done, information that was presented. We saw some of it tonight, the work that we did in trying to bring this project to, to make it happen and bring a lot of people together, making sure the Herald stayed downtown, bringing the school district in and worked with the university, at least just trying to get them to be a tenant. And I think that can't go unnoticed or unsaid, because there, there was work that was done that way. And so I want to, I guess, in that way, I'd like to make sure that everybody is treated fairly. I do think the purchase is the right thing, but I also need to make sure that, in the end, we're all, we're all treated fairly when it's done.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Any further comments? Before we go to a vote, Mr. Swanson.
Mr. Weber, members of JDA, I ask the question tonight as to when was the notice of this action published? And I was advised it was published on Saturday. Under your rules, you need to have three days of publication before you can act on a request. You do not have three days. However, under your code, you can waive that publication requirement if two-thirds of the JDA find that there are exigent circumstances to waive the publication requirement and proceed with your action. So before you could act upon the motion, you would have to consider whether you wish to waive that publication requirement or not. Your options would be to, if you did not waive it, to call a special meeting at a future date and provide an appropriate notice, or two, to adopt a motion, waiving the notice as provided by ordinance.
Any comments, suggestions, or, Mr. Sandy?
I would make the friendly suggestion that we should table till Monday evening and have a special meeting.
We have a motion.
It's a friendly suggestion, it's not a motion.
It's not a motion, it's a suggestion.
It's just a yearly conversation.
No second.
No second. It wasn't, it was just a friendly suggestion, not a motion. So is there further comments, or, or is there a motion?
Are we motioned that we move forward?
Okay, now we do have a motion on the floor. Looking for further discussion, or, first of all, before we go any further, I need a second.
I've got a question for Howard Swanson here, Mr. Swanson.
Sure, Mr. Warren.
So tomorrow technically would have been the third day, correct?
Correct.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday? Is there a timeframe, like tomorrow at 8:00 AM or tomorrow at 5:00 PM?
You don't have a notice indicating that you would be meeting tomorrow night, published at least three days before tomorrow last week.
But tomorrow would have been the third day.
Assuming that your publication occurred on Saturday, which I was advised it was, you could not act on this without waiving that publication requirement any earlier than tomorrow. If I'm incorrect on the date of publication.
I don't do that.
I was advised tonight that that's when the publication occurred.
Mayor, that's not incorrect, yes, for Saturday.
We still have a motion table, a motion to, to proceed.
To proceed.
To waive. And, and looking for a second?
I'll move to table.
So we, the, the motion to waive dies for lack of a second. Now we have a motion to table.
Move to table till Monday night.
We have a motion to table until Monday night? And, and we have a second. With the motion and the second on the floor, any further comments or discussion?
No, you can't discuss that.
Oh, the motion to table is not discussable with the second. We, we have no table. Very good.
We need to vote.
There's just no discussion.
Correct.
Very good. So with the motion on the floor, to table until next Monday. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute. No, Sunday is Easter, never mind, sorry. Aye. We do have a meeting Monday night.
Well, we're there.
Although, no.
Call for all in favor, and then all opposed.
Yes. We, we called for all in favor, opposed, same sign?
Sorry. I messed up the record.
All right, so we could go back. Sorry again. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes. With that, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
The city of Grand Forks, a proud home of the University of North Dakota, Monday, April 15, 2019. City council meeting is here. My calls are ordered. Welcome and roll call.
Wydell?
Here.
Doppler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Marshall?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Veen?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Under 1.2 mayor's announcements, it's Happy Tax Day. And it was quite a weekend in this sleepy little town, but Tax Freedom Day is April 24th, so that's when you've made enough to pay your taxes, according to Wikipedia. So anyway, I attended the spin for kids on Saturday morning, just after walking with councilmember Sandy Marshall at the Autism Awareness Walk at the UND Wellness Center. I want to say thank you to all involved, especially for the passionate work to bring awareness and understanding around autism and those who are living with it, and to raise funds for area youth with special needs. Events like these epitomize our community. I truly enjoyed the Wachepi grand entry on Saturday. It was the 49th anniversary of the UND timeout in Wachepi. And we are so fortunate to have nearly a half a decade of opportunity to enjoy. nearly a half a decade of opportunity to enjoy, learn, and engage in our native heritage. I hope we can work with the organizers for the next year's 50th anniversary to make it the most successful and the most attended one yet. And just up the road, our community hosted the National Collegiate Drone Racing Championship. I think it was attended by over 19 colleges and universities. The drone racing at the UND High Performance Center was incredible and really showcased our community's place as the epicenter of UAS and the Silla Drone Valley. And to top it all off Saturday, there was another quiet night at the Alara Center with the exciting Monster Truck event. So it's a quiet weekend and a sleepy hamlet. All of this was happening while our communities were cresting with the eighth highest river level in history. So I want to wish a special thanks to all of our local floodfighters, from our city engineers to public works and public safety, to all our great partners in and throughout the county. Thank you. And we wish the best and have our fingers crossed for all the communities and residents who live along the valley. It's a tense time and a time that demonstrates community, and we hope the best for all. This is also a good time to say thank you to the people of America, and to our own North Dakota community members who have supported the community's flood protection project. We owe much to those who came before us and the leaders who made extremely difficult decisions on which we now build opportunities and even more robust community. I appreciate the decisions they made that set the course and the tone for the future. And I try to remember that on any given Monday, we too may have the privilege and the difficult decisions that we need to make, and I'm glad we're moving forward. So with that, we go to item two of those presentations and proclamations, proclamations 2.1.
First one is Community Development Week, April 22nd through 26th.
So we have a communications, Community Development Block Grant Week. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has provided local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of citizens with low and moderate income, the CDBG funds are used by thousands of nonprofit organizations throughout the nation to address pressing human needs. And the CDBG program is celebrating 45 years of assisting communities and people to improve their quality of life. Next proclamation.
And the Fair Housing Proclamation.
Fair Housing Proclamation, Fair Housing Equal Opportunity Equals Opportunity, April 2019. Whereas one of the greatest freedoms enjoyed by Americans is the freedom to live in one's home of choice, this promise is made to us by the nation's fair housing law, which requires all people be treated equally in connection with the sale, rental of housing regardless of race, color, national origin, sex, disability, familial status, or religion. This marks the 51st anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act, the original legislation targeting the elimination of housing discrimination in America. April has been designated Fair Housing Month since the adoption of fair housing legislation in April 1968, and is the time each year when the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, High Plains Fair Housing Center, and other groups organize events and activities to focus attention on the issue of equal opportunity in housing. Each resident in Grand Forks deserves to support efforts to put into practice the principles of freedom, justice, and equality upon which this great nation was founded during the nationwide observance of Fair Housing Month. Now I have someone in the audience who would like to, okay, thank you. Item C.
National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
So, maybe that. National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 14th through 20th, 2019. Whereas emergencies can occur anytime that require police, fire, emergency medical services, when an emergency occurs, the proper response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. The safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Grand Forks Public Safety Answering Point. Public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety telecommunications of Grand Forks Public Safety Answering Point have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job this past year. So be it resolved that Grand Forks, North Dakota declares the week of April 14th through 20th, 2019, to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. In Grand Forks, to honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Item, next item is 2.2.
Employee Recognition.
We have William Wyatt, 20 years with the Police Department. Meredith Richards, our own Meredith Richards, 20 years with Community Development. Matt Mearfield, five years with Public Health. Joseph Ahmet, five years with the Fire Department. Vanessa Richter, five years with the Police Department. And Rachel Chisholm, five years with wastewater. Let's give them a hand.
A Flood Update.
Mr. Grasser, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, member of city council. We did have our flood fight meeting last Friday. Thankfully, we have had a crest, we're not planning on having continual meetings on that. So we did, looks like the river did crest on Thursday, April 11th, at, at just about 47 feet. We've been having a very slow fall since then, we're currently at about 44.7. The snowfall event we had last week is, is, is in the process of melting off. So what the projections are for Grand Forks is that we're going to fall to just over 44 feet about Wednesday, and then we're going to have a small rise back up to about 45.2 on Saturday. This will be updated again, there is another rainfall event coming in Wednesday, basically. Not expected to have a big impact, but again, the weather service will be updating, they're doing updates basically once or twice a day. So pay attention to that if you like, but again, we're going to bump up, and then we'll continue with slow fall. Just a quick note, fire and police are maintaining their presence out of Shady Ridge, there is still water out in that area, and if we would be rising back up again, that would be just about ready to, to stop here in the next couple of days, but with, with the, with the bump and continued slow ri- rise, that'll continue. Question on everybody's mind is what's happening with the bridges, and I wish I could tell you, except that I don't know. The, the water is still pretty high, the water is up into the structures of, of the bridges yet at this point in time. The Minnesota DOT has, has been in town today, they're doing basically sonar soundings to see about scour in the riverbed. They're also looking at the structure, and if there's any trees or anything in, to be concerned. And they are going to meet again tomorrow morning. It will be a safety call essentially between Minnesota DOT and North Dakota DOT, whether they think they, they have seen enough elements, structural elements of the bridge, bridges, to see if we can open them up. So stay tuned, we will see how that goes tomorrow. And they're going to have all their, their structural experts around to do that. They are planning on to expedite things as rapidly as possible, they do have access to drones to go in there, so we can, they can get in when the water is higher than if they had to wait. Normally what they do is they call it what we call a snooper truck, they put a man in a bucket, and they kind of go over to the side and, and look underneath, well, obviously you need to have a fair space of water, you know, between the water and the structure for that, so. Rest assured, they're doing everything they can to get it open as quickly as possible, safely, so, but I do not have a date for you. The, the two cities, the street departments will potentially be taking down a lot of the stop logs in those areas, but maintaining closure, most likely with trucks or vehicles, but just to start disassembling some of that.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Any questions for Mr. Grasser? You sleeping well at night now?
Yes.
Good, good. Item 2.4.
Legislative Update.
Mr. Bean, comments?
Yeah, I will try to make this rather quick, Mr. Sandy just reminded me. There's really, it's, things are winding down, so it's pretty short, there's only four major bills that we're watching. Senate Bill 2012, which is Department of Human Services funding, House Bill 1435, which is a statewide interoperable review of the network, that's in conference committee now, and Chief Lorenz, in fact, they all are working hard on that one. Senate Bill 2020 is the State Water Commission funding, that's going to be made tomorrow or Wednesday. The good thing is the municipal bucket that would have funding for the Man Park Water Pico Plant stays strong. There's some, some issues with render of valid water supply and whole cost share and capital funding that we'll be watching closely and trying to participate in. And then there was amendment that was just earlier about the downstream impacts of the FM diversion. I still think that's very critical, because the impacts for the 200 to 500 year flood are the ones that I'm most concerned about, we'll keep an eye on that. And last one, 275, Senate Bill, for long-term eventual movement, was actually killed by the House, but was brought back in an amendment to House Bill 1014 for the industrial commission funding. So we'll see where that ends up here in the next week or so too. So that's just a quick summary of what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any comments or opinions?
Thank you to Mr. Bean for all his hard work. And Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Bean and Mr. Weber for all your hard work. Okay. I have three public hearings and second reading of ordinances, 3.2.
Public hearing and second reading of ordinance appealing Article 12 and Chapter 21 related to transemergence, reenacting Article 12, Chapter 21, Grand Forks City Code relating to door-to-door sales and solicitations.
I'm opening a public hearing on 3.1. Closing the public hearing on 3.1, council action, Mr. Sandy motions, Mr. Wygell seconds, Mr. Swanson has comments?
Mayor, Grand, members of council, there were amendments that were distributed before the last meeting. The motion that I assume Mr. Sandy is making is to adopt those amendments, assuming that motion to amend is passed, you would then vote on the second reading of ordinance as amended.
Thank you. So we have the, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, now we've voted the motion is amended, and all, need a motion to approve, Mr. Sandy motions, Mr. Wygell seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, thank you. Item 3.2.
Public hearing and second reading of ordinance dedicating right away on the Platte University Police First Re subdivision.
I'll open the public hearing on 3.2. I'll close the public hearing on 3.2, council comments on 3.2. Mr. Wygell motions, Mr. Sandy, Ms. Marshall seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, thank you. 3.3.
Public hearing and second reading of an ordinance dedicating right away on the Platte Shanahan First Edition.
So I'll open the public hearing on 3.3. Close the public hearing on 3.3, council action on 3.3, Mr. Weber motions, Mr. Wygell seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, thank you. 3.4.
Public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending the Land Development Code related to signs.
I'll open the public hearing on 3.4. Close the public hearing on 3.4, council action on 3.4, Mr. Sandy motions, Ms. Marshall seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, thank you. 3.5.
Public hearing and resolution necessitates determination of protests on Project 8042, District 738, University Avenue reconstruct, no protests on this.
So I would like to open the public hearing on 3.5, close the public hearing on 3.5, council action on 3.5, Ms. Doppler, and then Mr. Weber. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, thank you. Item 4, who would like action, I just pull for discussion. I will pull 4, 9, C, D, and F. That leaves the others. Anybody else wish items to pull for, Mr. Bean?
I'd like 4, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 22.
So 4, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and then 22.
Yeah.
Okay, that leaves, yes, Mr. Sandy.
I have 421, so we may as well do all.
Mr. Sandy would like 421. So that leaves 4, 1, 4, 2, 4, 3, 4, 4, 5, 4, 6, 4, 7, 4, 8, 4, 9, A, B, E, 4, 10, 4, 11, 4, 12, 4, 15, 4, 14, 4, 15. For this motion and a second. Mr. Mark, Mr. Bean motions, Mr. Sandy seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, thank you. 4.9C.
And that is Project 7953 and 54, traffic signals turn lanes at Gateway 55th and Demers and Columbia.
Mr. Grasser.
Thank you, Mayor, member of city council, this is that batch of projects that we talked about, the bid opening last week. The DOT opened the bids on Friday, and so we identified in our staff report, we weren't going to be able to have the information to you until, well, officially today. The updated staff reports, I believe, went up last Friday. So because we didn't have the information at the committee of the poll, we are pulling, in this case, item C, as noted by the mayor. They did have the bid opening last week, Strata was the low bidder, $1,997,946.09. That was 7% over the engineer's estimate, and the DOT is asking us to concur in the award.
Need a motion, second, Mr. Weber motions, Mr. Wygell seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, thank you. 4.9D.
70, Project 7974, concrete panel replacement, Washington Street, 8th Avenue, north to Gateway.
Mr. Grasser.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar discussion, the low bidder on this particular project was off construction. The low bid was $1,223,357.20. That is about 20% over the engineer's estimate. Again, the DOT is asking for the city to concur an award.
Mr. Sandy motions, Ms. Marshall seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, thank you. 4, 9, F.
Project 7750, Demers Avenue reconstruct, sorely to North 6th Street.
Mr. Grasser.
Thank you. Demers Avenue, again, similar discussion, the bid opening, the low bidder there was a Strata contra, uh, Strata Corporation, low bid was $8,116,433.95. That one was 32% over the engineer's estimate, and the DOT is asking us to concur in the award.
Thank you. Mr. Weber motions, second, Ms. Doppler. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we go, thank you, Mr. Grasser, 416.
Preliminary approval of an ordinance dedicating right away on the Platte Edgewood Village First Re subdivision.
Mr. Bean.
Thank you. Maybe just a couple of questions. Can you explain what's happening here with the Edgewood Village concept?
Sure. The 4, 16, 17, 18, 19 are all related. What they're proposing to do is a senior housing, independent living, and assisted living, as well as a memory care, nursing care, medical services. They're, they're looking to do that in the area north of 47th Avenue South and east of Southern Estates Park, which would be east of South 19th Street. So those four items are the plaque, the vacation annexation, and PUDs that are required to do that. The developers are here if you have some specific questions to the development itself.
Right now, my question is probably mainly with you, one of the questions that I have is the crossing of the, the South and drainway. Will that be, is that a part of this project, and is that going to be incorporated into it?
Yeah, um, so in 416, that does include the plaque of that area. The, the would be included in on that, and that's to the north, the first phase, they're going to start along 47th Avenue South, so they're going to be further to the south. So I don't think Dr. Shaw could talk about the phasing, but I believe that crossing of the, the drainways in the later phase.
But that would be a part of the extension of 44th Avenue South, is that what you're saying?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was up on the north end, so the 44th, that, that's, that's a future phase as well, and that would be over to South Washington Street.
Right, I, I think that's important, the interconnection across.
Yeah, we still have that, and they have that plan too, and I, I think that is the desire of the developer, to have that eventually put in, because they, they are looking at the link across, and utilize that link too for, for outlet as well, for access of vehicles and the connection to the medical complex there.
And, and the vacation of South 19th Street?
Yeah, that one's a little bit more interesting. The Park District has had a desire not to have that street along, along their edge. Obviously, we do special assess those, and so they, they had a concern of, of having that property for that full stretch and having to pay for half of that road. We have looked at that, the utilities would still be along that stretch, they would still work, and it meshes in with the building. The one thing the planning commission did ask for is, is the driveway that connects to 47th, have that pushed closer to the center of the development, and so that's one of the things that's being looked at as well and, and agreed to.
And do you see, then, the 45th Avenue South vacated, or in the future to the west of 19th?
I think that's going to be coming as a future request from Park District as well.
That is on that part of Park District, well.
That's correct, it'll be, Park District would vacate that piece, and both of those, they on both sides of that roadway, so they both, ownership would be turned back to the of that roadway, so they both, ownership would be turned back to the Park District in that case.
And I think that this is a very fantastic project for the community. I think I look forward to it.
Yeah. It'll give development, and it'll really help that area as well.
I do, too. And I don't know if the developer wants to say anything on behalf of that or not, but...
Welcome, Mr. Yeezy.
Mr. Mayor, how are you today?
Good, thank you.
I'm Phil Yeezy, 1762 La Jolla Circle, Grand Forks. We've been looking at these projects for a long time. You know, we've been looking at feasibility studies in the Grand Forks market since ninety-seven, when we first built our East Grand Forks facility. And since then, we've gone to a lot of places. We own sixty-four facilities across seven states. I think we have a dozen facilities in North Dakota, although. And what was interesting about the demographic studies I've been working on is we noticed a big dip in the elderly population because of the flood. And what we saw on the demographics because of the, if you were, you know, near retirement or in retirement and your house was flooded, you probably wouldn't let town, which is really unfortunate for this community. But now it's really coming back strongly. I think in Pope County and in Grand Forks, we have about eight thousand people that are sixty-five and older. That number will be eleven thousand in about four years. So we've got a twenty-five percent increase in elderly coming up. And a lot of it is, there'll be a lot of needs-based housing. I'm talking about low-income housing, affordable housing, nicer assisted-living facilities, possibly some more skilled nursing beds in the community. And what we're trying to do is create a concept where the village also has a medical component. And we're seeing this in a lot of communities around. So what we want to do is we want to have the medical office building in the corner, which would be stopped by ultrasound, it would be an express care fund there. And then that would be tied into the facility, and we would have physicians actually doing home visits within the facility in the future, which is kind of new in the industry. So any other questions?
How many residents would be told on this thing? How many residents would you have on this thing?
Well, we have fifteen acres in the southwest corner. There would be about two hundred units of combined assisted-living, independent living, memory care, and some townhomes.
Thank you. That was in my first state of the city address, this concept. I won't take intellectual credit for it.
Well, actually, I remember that address. I was there.
Thank you.
I took notes, and I wanted to thank you for your idea.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, Mr. Yeezy?
Just like to say, Mr. Yeezy, thank you for coming in. I know you were here on April third for the planning and zoning meeting and went all through this information for that group. It's really nice that you would come back here and spend the time visiting with us.
Well, I do live here.
Really appreciate it.
And we're grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vian, any other questions on four sixteen, four seventeen, four eighteen, four nineteen, or four twenty?
Just right.
Okay, so now four one six.
Preliminary approval of ordinance dedicating right-of-way on the Platte Edgewood Village first resubdivision.
Motion and second.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Weigle, second. Mr. Weber, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carries, thank you. Four seventeen.
Vacate portion of South Nineteenth Street between Forty-seventh Avenue, south, and Forty-seventh Avenue, south.
Mr. Weber motions. Mr. Weigle seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carries, thank you. Four eighteen.
Preliminary approval of an ordinance amending the zoning map, Southern Estates, PUD, amendment number twelve.
Council comments on four eighteen. Mr. Weber motions. Ms. Dockler seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carries, thank you. Four nineteen.
Preliminary approval of an ordinance annex portions of Edgewood Village re-first resubdivision, not previously annexed.
Council comments on four nineteen. Mr. Weber motions. Mr. Weigle seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carries, thank you. Four twenty.
Preliminary approval of an ordinance to amend the zoning map, Columbia Park, South PUD, amendment number three.
Council comments on four twenty. Mr. Weigle motions. Ms. Marshall seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carries, thank you. Four twenty-one.
Preliminary approval of an ordinance, technical corrections relating to Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, 2045 transportation plan update.
Mr. Sandy.
Mr. Mayor, the long-range transportation 20, uh, plan, the 2045 long-range transportation plan, still, and the street and highway element still contains a bridge Second Avenue, south bridge, and therefore, I will be voting against this change, regardless of this has any effect on the bridge or not. I'm ready to vote, sir.
Thank you. Council further comments on four twenty-one?
I'll move.
Mr. Weber motions, second. Ms. Dockler. You have any comments, Mr. Brooks? No? So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Three against, Mr. Weigle, Ms. Marshall, and Mr. Sandy dissent.
So we have a three-three.
Three-three.
Need to vote, Mr. Weber.
I'm going to have to vote with Mr. Sandy. So I don't like that.
Well, just a reminder, too, that this is just a, I know the reason, but the, it is a tax, some numbering.
It isn't going to pass.
I understand, so it would fail. We'll leave the numbering as is.
Motion fails. But we just move on, Mr. Swanson. Okay, four twenty-two.
Preliminary approval of an ordinance to amend the zoning map, Judge Ashwin's third edition.
Mr. Vian.
Just very quickly, Mr. Brooks, do you want to just explain what we did here? I think this was an example of staff working with the homeowner that was having an issue. This also seems very similar to a bill that was proposed in the legislature that I think likely was debated on the basis that we need to work with every homeowner individually on some of their zoning requests, so.
Yeah, that's true. Now, what we have is, on occasion in town, we have a handful of homes that are within the wrong zoning district. In this case, this example, it's a single-family home that's been there for many years and Zone B three. So there was a bill that went through the legislature, and I think Councilman Vian was actually able to be there when it was discussed. And with the, the, to sell the property, it does need to be within the correct zoning, otherwise it's what's considered a legal non-conforming use. It's, it was established prior to zoning, but it is in a non-conforming use as it sits today. So in this case, what we argued at Bismarck was that these should be local decisions. We should be notifying neighbors on those situations and looking at them on an individual basis. So this is a great example of that. Staff is recommending approval of this, we're actually also looking at the neighboring property to include that as well. We have not heard back. We have sent out a letter to that neighbor. This is preliminary, and it'll come back for final next month. And I do think this is a great example as to why we testified the way we did in Bismarck and trying to keep local control of these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
I don't know if I misheard, Mr. Brooks, or if he misspoke. A non-conforming use can be sold. It is not a prohibition to the sale. It may have implications on future development or so forth, but as far as the existence of a non-conforming use does not pose an impact on the actual sales transaction of real estate.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I did misspeak on that. What I meant to say is it's difficult to get financing on those, so that's the reason that we're looking at doing this. It's difficult to get financing on something that's a non-conforming use.
Mr. Vian.
I'll move.
We have a motion. Ms. Marshall, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carries, thank you. We need introduction to ordinance on four two, four sixteen, four eighteen, four nineteen, four twenty, and four twenty-two. Mr. Sandy, access that introduction ordinance. Mr. Swanson.
Mayor Brown, Members Council, with regard to the item four twenty-one, just so there's no confusion among council, your declining to adopt the technical corrections renumbered has no effect upon the substantive provisions of ordinances previously adopted.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We have taken a stand. Okay. Item five, informational items. We have none. Item six, citizen requests. Leslie Woneravich wishes to address the council on the Housing City Ordinance. Welcome. State your name, address for the record, please.
My name is Leslie Woneravich, and I'm a resident of North Fifty-fifth Street in Grand Forks here.
Thank you.
And say good evening to Mr. Manera and then members of the city council. I am here to advocate briefly for felons who are seeking housing without the burden of discrimination. And I just want to state here, the current Grand Forks City Ordinance 21-0610.1 prohibits discriminatory act described as discriminating against any person, conditions, or privileges of the rental or lease of real property to or from any person or group of persons. What I would like to do is propose an expansion of this current proposal to specifically include felons, knowing, having much experience working with felons, understanding the burden that they have finding house, housing in Grand Forks, North Dakota here. My understanding with felons is they have a very difficult time with their transition. And I won't give you a bunch of numbers, even though being inexperienced with the city council, I can tell many of you are numbers people. But eighty-one million dollars was the cost. That was, that was a low estimate of the cost of incarcerating felons two years ago. And the transition process and the burden of recidivism is enormous. I think it's safe to say that here. It's a win-win situation for everyone if we're able to find housing for felons in Grand Forks and throughout the state here. Having worked at the homeless shelter here in town here, as a social worker and a case manager, I know I can speak and testify personally the difficulty that felons have finding housing here and the discriminations that face, they face here. In the city of Grand Forks, we have second chance employers in town here, and the purpose of second chance employers is to specifically hire felons to help them transition back into society and become healthy members of society. And there is also in Grand Forks, and with my work at the homeless shelter here, I found that there is a very minimum number of second chance landlords. And my proposal, I believe, will create an environment that's more conducive for landlords to be willing to give felons a second chance as far as giving them, renting out to them. It is, is my hope with this proposal that you would consider it, and this would assist the felons in this area. Just to end here really quick, I make this request as a husband, as a father of four daughters, and someone who has well over a decade of experience working with felons, both on a professional basis and a personal basis. I've been a licensed social worker since 1994. And I also make this proposal personally as a Christian, with my premise being that of mercy to those who, those who are at risk, including the felon population, and those who have paid their debt in society. So I'm hoping you take that all in consideration here, and my experiences. And I'll stop right here, but I could give you a long list of testimonies of felons who have assimilated back into society, and they're doing well, and some of them very successful businessmen.
And that's why groups like F5, which is the reset key on your computer, are so important to help these people. So we will get you in contact with Mr. Phelan, and then he'll show the process to move this forward.
Okay, great. Okay, great. And I've had in contact with Adam Martin of F5, and we are working together also with him also here.
Thank you very much. Item seven, approval of the minutes and bills, yes? And then seven point one.
The vendor list as presented.
Need a motion and second to pay the bills. Ms. Marshall motions. Mr. Sandy seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carries, the bills are paid. Seven point two.
And there are no minutes attached to the group.
And then next is item eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Brown, what a night. Hey, number one, on April 29th, we're going to have a city strategic priority meeting. As I mentioned, that's the fifth Friday of the month. We're going to have it at the Public Safety Center. And as I mentioned also, we're going to have housing and some south end development things, and then along with some budget, salary, benefit plan stuff. So that's kind of our focus. Again, if you have some additional things you'd like to throw on the agenda, we'll certainly add that on. But we're forming things up, so four twenty-nine, those are the precursor for what we're going to talk about, and we'll be at the Public Safety Center, and I'll send you out information in due time. Also, thank you for University Avenue, Demers Avenue, going back to the beginning of this meeting. Those are extraordinary projects that we got from planning to execution, and it's going to be a bit of a challenge during the construction season, so let us know if there's issues. I'm sure there will be issues, but we'll be, do the best we can working with UND and the downtown folks to try to keep things moving forward during these challenging construction seasons that we're going to have. But what an extraordinary time. If we were here in the fall this year, it's going to be awesome. Finally, you know, we talked a lot about the flood planning stuff, and thanks to all the public safety and public works, engineering folks at all. But I have a special point I always like to point out is folks that work in public works and water works, they do a lot of the heavy lifting out on the street, you know, as a street-level bureaucrat, and they do some extraordinary things, whether it's putting up those stopwags, working in those pump stations, melting all that ice in those wet wells so we can close the gates. And the most beautiful part of those people is that they don't want any credit, they just do their job so humbly, Mayor, and members of city council. You should be very proud of their skill level, their level of leadership, their dedication to the city of Grand Forks, and the way they are so humble. So with that, I just wanted to end on that. I point there's some great individuals that work for the city of Grand Forks.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Next, we go to nine, Mayor and council member comments. Councilman Weigle.
Just real quick, Mayor, I've been working with Councilman Dockler a little bit about an amendment to the noisy party ordinance for the city of Grand Forks, and I would just ask that we bring that on Monday to the committee of the whole meeting.
Mr. Phelan?
Sure.
Noted. Thank you. Councilwoman Dockler?
Just for Danny's side.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Weber?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, Ms. Thank you.
Mr. Vian?
A couple of things. I appreciate what, well, just stated here about the Demers Avenue reconstruction project by leaving it for construction, hopefully a very successful project. I think we did a lot of work on the corridor alignments and the streetscape and that. I do think that now is the time that we should start looking at some of the vertical streetscape design, so I could challenge you, Mr. Phelan, to start looking at that and see what we might do there. might do there. I'd also like to say a thank you to the Engineering Public Works for all they've done here with the flood fight so far. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of pressure and stress. That's been exceptional, too. One other thing has to do with the unfortunate-ness of the two pedestrian fatalities that we've had, and the fact that we should be doing some level of study or whatever it is to see if there's something we can be doing better.
Thank you.
And I think one of the areas we've done, we've assessed this in the MPO under some of our guidance principles, safety is one of those things that we are now being graded on, and this kind of fits into that. So I think that needs to rise to the top as we look at all the things that are going on to keep, hopefully keep these from happening again.
Thank you. Council President Sandy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd certainly like to give a shout-out to our Grand Forks Public Health for the great twenty eighteen annual report that was left here under the leadership of Ms. Swanson. I know that our public health does exceptional work, and actually, when I was on the board, it was some of my favorite meetings to see real people in action, working very hard for our citizens of Grand Forks. I must say, I'm a little bit remiss about the timing on our JDA and the notice. Is it always been the fact that we need to three days for JDA notice?
Mr. Swanson?
If you are acting upon any proposal, taking action, other than procedural, the ordinance requires you to have three days' published notice.
Is that the same for city council meetings and committee of the whole meetings?
No, it is unique to the JDA. It has been in the ordinance since the JDA was created.
Excellent. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor. It was a great meeting.
Thank you. What a wonderful weekend at Grand Forks, because there was Spin for Kids, Autism Awareness Walk, Wachepi Grand Entry, and UND Timeout, and National Collegiate Drone Racing Championships, Monster Truck Event, all the while having our eighth highest river level in history. So we have to pause and say thank you to Congressman Pomeroy and Senators Conrad and Dorgan for our flood protection project, and also thank you to our employees, William Wyatt, Meredith Richards, Matt Meirfield, Joseph Ahmet, Vanessa Richter, and Rachel Chisholm. And with that, a motion to adjourn. Mr. Sandy quickly motions to adjourn. Ms. Marshall seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, we stand adjourned, thank you.
No, Mike, it's dead.